Okay, I think we'll get started. Welcome, everybody, to the May 28, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting. I'd like to ask the city clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Richardson.
Present.
Councillor Randall.
Present.
Councillor Runyon.
Absent.
Councillor Long.
Present.
Councillor McLaughlin. Coming right now, okay.
Present.
Councillor McLaughlin. And Mayor Mace.
Here.
I'm here, too. I'd like to ask, at this point, item three is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Councillor Scott Randall to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under one government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item four is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second that.
It's been moved by Councillor Randall and seconded by Councillor Long to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion carries. Item five, presentations and proclamations. I'd like to ask Mr. Roger Nichols to come forward. We have a special presentation for Mr. Nichols. And I'm going to go ahead and read this. In acknowledgement of outstanding dedication and contribution to journalistic excellence, the City of the Dells hereby presents this certificate of recognition to Mr. Roger Nichols. Throughout his distinguished career in journalism, Mr. Nichols has demonstrated unwavering commitment to news gathering and reporting, enriching the community of the Dells with insightful and impactful impactful coverage. As a seasoned journalist, he has consistently displayed exceptional proficiency in delivering accurate and informative news stories. His dedication to thorough reporting has provided invaluable insights into local affairs, contributing to informed public discourse and community engagement. In addition to his exemplary work covering significant events, conducting interviews, and participating in city council meetings and work sessions, Mr. Nichols has also been instrumental in promoting the interests of the city in Wasco County during his tenure as a member of the Columbia River Gorge Commission. In recognition of his commitment to journalistic integrity and professionalism, as well as his contributions to local government, the City of the Dells extends its deepest appreciation and presents the certificate of recognition to Mr. Nichols dated this 28th day of May, 2024.
Thank you so much.
I also have this medallion for you, City of the Dells medallion. And if there's anything you'd like to say, we'll waive the three minutes. I'm sure you don't want to expand on that. Thank you very much, Roger. Okay, item six is audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Up to three minutes per person will be allowed. Citizens are encouraged to ask questions with the understanding that the city can either answer the question tonight or refer the question to the appropriate staff member who will get back to you within a reasonable amount of time. If a response by the city is requested, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. The issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for city council consideration. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council? I see there is somebody who would like to address. Bob Kenyon from the Dells, would you like to come forward? And is the clock working tonight? Okay, you have three minutes and you'll you got the clock in the upper left-hand corner.
Hey, City Council, better hurry. Anyway, I was there two months ago. I want to say that maybe it took a bit of a nudge from here, but the scheduled link connecting the the regular routes through the Bustard Hood River then was corrected. And also, little thing, a little housekeeping, they never put a date on the schedule. They've now promised they will do that on the next tour. So we're still, we're still in the mix now of the idea of bringing the hub of the transportation coming back to the center. I mean, at least now it's in the discussion phase where we go back to the original hub of somewhere around Federal Street, something like that. Instead of the buses, both now, the red and the blue are both going clear out like that, the way people describe it. You mean clear out there and and clear out to the transit center, which is not really a transit center. The building, all the mechanics of that place will stay out there. The whole idea is just to bring the hub. So if the red and the blue local routes hub out from there, from the federal, from the federal the idea is, there's a lot of miles going back out to the transit center. Well, that that I didn't expect anything to happen when I had another meeting with him. But it's in the mix, that's all I say. And with the with the Tony's lot being torn down and I submitted a comment there, a lot of other people, too. It all kind of ties in, you know, bring the center of the Dells back to the center. That's kind of the idea behind. And with that lot, I don't know where that's going. Nobody here probably knows where it's going. But and then the hub of, in other words, the hub of the transportation, so that when somebody comes from from Portland, for instance, then gets on the link to the Dells, they end up, right, end up being dropped in the center of the Dells.
You got thirty, you got thirty, you have thirty seconds, excuse me, go ahead, go ahead. Thirty seconds.
Okay, okay. Well, that's the thing. So that's the, kind of the idea is bring the center. So when people come to the center, they come to the center. That's the, that's the idea. That's what we're going for now.
I appreciate you bringing up the Tony's Building and that 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 area of the city. And I was wondering, would you like to comment on anything to do with the urban renewal and what's happening?
Yeah, well, actually, yes. So I wanted to verify which survey you took because we have an official survey where there's a sign down there where the old Tony's Building was. And then I hear that there's an unofficial one on Facebook, and I just want to be clear for everybody in the office as well as you that you're taking the official one either on the city's website or from the sign.
You don't know how to go on Facebook.
Okay, so good.
Submitted in the one that.
Wonderful. Thank you for taking the time to do that.
Yeah, that's a good idea. There's another week to go.
Till June 10.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kenyon. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you for the time.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the city council for up to three minutes for any item that is not on the agenda? Okay, last call. Thank you. Item seven is the city manager's report. Mr. Klebs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few items this evening, as well as an update on some of the goals and strategies from the session we had last November. So this report might be a little bit longer than normal. First, I wanted to assure the council and the community that we're closely monitoring the downtown street trees. And we're working with the contractor to ensure that there's an adequate watering schedule, and that's that's being followed and completed. The contractor will be adding a few wetting agents to the wells and will be likely adding gator bags or something to that effect as we get into the hotter weather to assist with that. Some of the trees will most likely need to be replaced this fall, and that will be covered by our contract and the procurement process that we follow previously. I also wanted to mention that in your packet tonight, there are proposed minutes from April 23, 2024, Special City Council Meeting. Those minutes accurately reflect what occurred at the meeting. But I wanted to clarify that there is no merit compensation for regular city employees and that this type of compensation is only a part of contractual agreements. We'll note this information in the minutes, so there's a connection there, but we'll keep them as approved. I also want to let the council know that at the, prior to the budget meetings that we had a couple of weeks back, we learned that a Zoom link that we had used year to year had expired. This was just ahead of the meeting. We quickly corrected the meeting link with a new link, as well as updated information on the website. We double-checked with the Department of Revenue, which confirmed that this did not affect the budget proceedings and the subsequent action by the Budget Committee. But we wanted to make sure you were aware of this occurrence and assurance that we've updated the process for creating such links. We're also continuing to work with the State of Oregon on renewing the lease that we have with them, or two state agencies, I should say, at the State Office Building. This effort has been going on for quite some time, but we've had some recent progress recently. We finally have an actual lease document that we've been tossing back and forth through red lines, and it's our objective to have this completed by August. I also wanted to provide you a reminder that there is a work session next Wednesday, June 5, at 1:30. This is a joint session between City Council and Wasco County Commission. The focus of discussion will be on strategic investment program abatements and some of the associated revenues from those. And then finally, it's a little belated, my apologies, but I wanted to provide an update on the city council goals that we established prior. As the city council knows, we had five different goal areas that we had focused on. The first one was livability, second, housing supply, third is houselessness, fourth is fiscal sustainability, and fifth is infrastructure. So I'll take each one of those in turn. Under livability, we continue to recruit and hire new police officers. We still have a couple of vacancies, but we actually just hired a new officer earlier this morning, which was a really exciting interview. Glad to have that individual join us. We have also posted the second code enforcement position that is in next year's budget, pending approval from the city council and taking effect after July 1. And we have a new evidence tech onboarded as well. As I've mentioned previously, we've secured a new contract with Columbia Gorge Humane Society, which took over for home at last. We just received a copy of the first draft of an updated animal control ordinance from Wasco County that we'll use in our efforts to update the city's own ordinance. The downtown plaza at Federal Street in partnership with Urban Renewal, this is the community survey for the old Tony site that we mentioned a moment ago. And in addition, through the budget process, we've allocated some additional funds to do an update on the design of that plaza. We've maintained the sidewalk rehab program and ADA funding in the proposed budget. And we will have another session of the Local Government Academy later this fall, and we'll be talking about that tomorrow at our leadership team meeting. Under housing supply, we had our first session for the housing production strategies, or strategy that's required by the state that was back on May 2. We'll likely have at least one or two more sessions around the housing production strategy to finish out the year. Under houselessness, a couple of updates there, we had a very productive meeting with Union Pacific Railroad and the police police force that they have on staff there to coordinate efforts with our own police department when it comes to concerns around safety and camps and crossings at the railroad tracks that we have here in town. And Kenny LaPointe, the Executive Director for Mid-Columbia Community Action Council, will be coming to give an update to the council on June 10. And I think it's just later this Friday, I believe, there is a ribbon cutting for the Gloria Center that you should all be invited to. Under fiscal sustainability, as I mentioned just a moment ago, we're having a joint work session with Wasco County to discuss strategic investment program revenue. We'll be having a discussion around transient room tax on, at the first council meeting in June. This will probably be a two- or three-part discussion to discuss tourism, our community, the TRT ordinance that the city has, as well as the uses of TRT. And the proposed budget, we've maintained an ending fund balance of four months operating, as well as a 10% contingency. And I'm pleased to report that we have finalized a new library IGA in partnership with the Library Service District and the Library Service District Board. It was very, very happy to see that come across the finish line. And then one of the strategies there was revolved around franchise agreements. And so the city manager, myself, and the city attorney have been working together to to research some of the best practices that cities have used to develop and manage their different franchises. We most likely think that will take the form of a recommendation to form, to pass a new ordinance, creating a new chapter in our municipal code. And that may give us some of the best structure and control going forward, so more to hear on that front. And then under infrastructure, we're still working on a citywide master plan for the different city facilities that we have. Some of the changes to the budget process, as the council knows, was an update to how we structure our capital improvement plans and what items actually land in that plan. And so using that new structure and working with the new facility supervisor, we'll have more information and a more comprehensive update over the course of the next year and for the next budget process. And then finally, you know, we always try and keep the forefront of our mind, that core service that cities provide around infrastructure. And so we have been going through a water master plan update, and we'll likely be embarking on a wastewater master plan update next year as well. And so just wanted to highlight a few of those different developments from the city council goals. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, or if you have any concerns with any of the direction I just mentioned with what we're going forward, it'd be a great time to hear about that now. Otherwise, that's my report.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Klebs? Very thorough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item eight is city council reports. We'll start on my right with Councillor McLaughlin.
All right, well, I've been the last couple of weeks quite busy with Lyons. I attended the conference in Banden, Oregon, spoke there. I did miss the airport meeting, sorry, Jeff. Let's see. I have been involved with, since my return, with many briefings and meetings focused on homelessness and events for the city. So that's my report for this week.
Thank you. Councillor Long.
Yes, so of course I attended the two nights of the city budget meeting as well as the Sister Cities Association meeting, and I'll be giving a more in-depth update at our next council meeting when I have some more details that I can release to the public. I also attended the Light Up the Dells at the Getchel Waldron Building. So if anyone hasn't gone by to see that, it's pretty spectacular. It will be every night from basically sunset until dawn, so probably like around 9:30 at this point, in order to really have those colors pop. But it's three of the old signs that used to be on that particular building that light up and transition from one to another. So it's historical and hopefully it'll be drawing into us as I drive by as well. Then I attended a briefing session with the city manager, the mayor, and councillor Richardson, as well as an urban renewal agency meeting. And today I attended the community outreach team meeting, and we will be headed to Washington, DC in September, most likely the week of the ninth. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councillor Randall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item, and that is the meeting I had with yourself and the city manager last Wednesday for the briefing.
Thank you. Councillor Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In addition to the briefing and the budget meetings, I also attended the Urban Renewal meeting last week and Traffic Safety Meeting, and finally, also with Councillor Long, a site tour at the 280 Earth Facility. I think that was two weeks ago now.
Thank you. I've also been out of town. I just, I was gone for 16 days and got back, and since I've been back, some of the stuff has already been mentioned. I did an interview with KACI Radio this morning, and yesterday I had the honor of addressing a crowd of people at the Kelly Viewpoint on Memorial Day Celebration sponsored by the American Legion. So with that, we'll go to the consent agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the more important items and issues. Any councillor may request an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the action items section. Tonight, we have six items on the consent agenda. First, approval of the April 22 regular city council meeting minutes. Second is the approval of the April 23 special city council meeting minutes. Third is the approval of the April 29 city council work session minutes. Fourth is a resolution assessing a property on West 7th Street for the cost of nuisance abatement. Fifth is an item regarding surplus of city vehicles. And sixth, something the city manager mentioned is deals with clarifying language regarding the effective date for stipend increases. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and second. McLaughlin, second.
It's been moved by councillor Richardson and seconded by councillor McLaughlin to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion?
Yes, on item D, Resolution Number 24011, assessing real property. Are the owners here this evening for that abatement? I usually give that opportunity, just in fairness, to present a case if there's any extenuating circumstances, but hearing none, then I'm satisfied.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, I'm sorry, councillor Richardson?
That's okay. I just wanted to point out item F, for those keeping score at home. The city council's stipend increase that we voted on will be taking effect for successors in office, not for ourselves. So it's, it's a policy that is a good policy, but takes effect upon new city councillors being seated.
Any other discussion?
None.
Okay. Just a quick question about about the abatement. Is our code enforcement officer retiring soon? Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Code enforcement officer has not given us a specific date of retirement. She's, she's indicated that that may, that time may be approaching at some point, and so we thought it prudent to part of the reason was to bring on a second code enforcement officer to have some overlap there.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing specific at this time.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Item 10A is the, looking for the authority for expenditures to the city trip, city street chip seal project. Mr. Eric Hansen will be presenting.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Eric Hansen. I am the Deputy Public Works Director, and I'll be presenting the staff report for the 2024 Chip Seal Project. In recent years, the Public Works Department In recent years, the Public Works Department has utilized many chip seal treatments to preserve payment services on city streets. This is an effective and relatively low-cost treatment that can be used on streets that still have fairly good street service conditions, and it does not trigger ADA requirements on adjacent sidewalks. The cracks in the streets are filled before they are chip sealed. It is now also the city's practice to apply a fog seal coat of oil over the new chip seals to better lock in the chip rock and extend the life of the chip seal. The 2024 chip seal effort, as in past years, will be undertaken in partnership with Wasco County Public Works, since they have the equipment needed to apply chip seals, which the city does not. The county only charges the city for the cost of its labor on these projects. The city has also gone together with Wasco County for the purchase of the chip seal oil to get the best pricing available. This year's project will include 32 street sections throughout this, throughout the city totaling three and a half miles of streets to be chip sealed. The list of streets to be chip sealed can be viewed at the Public Works Transportation Division page of the city's website. New for this year's project is the inclusion of a contracted street sweeping service for both before and after the chip seal application. This addition aims to expedite the removal of loose rock from the streets promptly. The contractor possesses the capability to efficiently deposit the street sweepings directly into an onsite dump truck. Subsequently, these materials will be transported back to Public Works for recycling, intending to repurchase the chip seal rock for winter sanding rock in the upcoming season. This approach not only ensures a more seamless cleanup process, but also underscores our commitment to sustainability by maximizing resource utilization. The anticipated expenditures for the 2024 chip seal project include chip seal oil, chip rock, Wasco County labor, sweeping, towing, and the fog seal oil, for a total of $174,987.75. In advance of the planned work, the Public Works Department will inform residents using press releases and door hangers. Streets will be posted as no parking at least one day in advance, and occasionally there is a need to tow inoperative vehicles from the project area, and those costs have been anticipated and included in the project estimate. The adopted fiscal year 2023-2024 budget includes 202,000 of the street fund allocated for chip seal projects, with an estimated project cost of $174,987.75, there are adequate funds available for this contract. Staff recommendation is to move to authorize the expenditures for the 2024 chip seal project in an amount not to exceed $174,987.75. Does council have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Hanson? I have just two. I wanted to ask you, inflation, of course, has been a problem for everybody, and when you look at the chip seal oil and the chip rock, and is there anything in particular that stands out in your mind as far as inflation really taking a hit on those particular items?
It seems the oil goes up more than anticipated every year. We do try to maximize our buying power by buying in bulk with the county, which helps, but it's, it's still considerable.
Right. And are we going to get a list of streets at some point, that's council?
They are, they're listed on the city website right now.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hanson? I'm not allowed to make motions, sorry.
All right, I'm just trying to get back to the right spot.
My phone's dead, so.
Mr. Mayor, move to authorize expenditures for the 2024 chip seal project in an amount not to exceed $174,987.75.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Councillor Richardson and seconded by Councillor Randall to authorize the expenditures for the 2024 chip seal project. Is there any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 11A is consideration of a recommendation to approve an enterprise zone tax abatement. And we have with us our Director of Economic Development, want you to introduce yourselves. Will you be giving the staff report, Dan?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dan Spots, Economic Development Officer for City of the Dells. I'm joined by Joe Amory.
Good evening, Jill Amory, Assessor and Tax Collector for Wasco County.
And we are here to present our recommendation for a five-year tax abatement for 280 Earth. I'd like to present some information. You have this in your packet as well as a staff report. You also have a report from a pre-application conference that we conducted back in March with the applicant. In addition, we have Jacques Gagné, who's science, I believe, Chief Science Officer, I believe is his title, I'll ask him to correct me on that one, in the audience tonight, and he has a slide deck that goes into some additional detail on this project, a brief deck that has some visuals and some other information on this. So Jill Amory and I are managers for the Joint City of the Dallas, Wasco County Enterprise Zone, Port of the Dells is also a partner in this. This is a tax abatement and a, and a business recruitment initiative. It's been underway in Wasco County for a number of years in various incarnations. Many different businesses have benefited from this, businesses of all scale, large ones. One really big one in town always comes to mind, but also a lot of smaller ones, hotels, other things through the years. There are different levels of abatement. There's three-year, five-to-seven-year extended. You can even go into strategic investment program. That's not what we're talking about tonight, though. Jill and I have the ability to confer a three-year abatement administratively, however, in this case, we are recommending a five-year abatement for 280 Earth. So I'd like to go in a little bit more background on the rationale for that. And if you'll see in your, your packet, you have a, my staff report on this one. So 280 Earth is a carbon sequestration company. Carbon sequestration is one of several different strategies to address global warming. Carbon sequestration in this case is a mechanical approach to that technology. The idea is to pull carbon out of the atmosphere, sequester it, lock it up long-term for at least 100 years, so that at the end of the day, you are ultimately reducing carbon dioxide from the atmosphere. 280 Earth derives its name from its goal of 280 parts per million, that is the pre-industrial level of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. Currently, we're exceeding 420, and that number goes up year by year, literally. One of the county commissioners, Phil Brady, is a science teacher. He conducted a experiment with classes about 15 years ago. He was reading a, reaching a reading of 300 parts per million. He did it again a couple of years ago, it was over 400. He thought his equipment must be making a mistake. No, it wasn't. It had risen 300, from 300 to 400 ppm in that period of time. So it is a fairly significant issue. The company before us would be a small step in the direction of doing so. However, they're producing, the output is 25 ppm. So you put enough of these companies together, or you scale this one and others like it up sufficiently, you can make an impact. That's, I think, kind of the bottom line on all of this, and one of the reasons that we're coming forward with this recommendation, kind of a vote of confidence in that company, a vote of confidence in the technology, vote of confidence in the City of the Dells as a potential center for this technology. What 280 Earth is talking about right now on the subject of our recommendation is a 5,000-ton capacity unit module on property they have already established at a, for R&amp;D, proof-of-concept module. That produces 500 tons, and that proof-of-concept has been proven. They demonstrated the technology in April. The five-year abatement we're requesting is for that first 5,000-ton module. They, the company hopes to establish a option and acquire a second parcel at Port of the Dells. If successful, their goal then is to produce another three 5,000-ton modules. That's for another day, that's not the topic tonight. The request for the five-year abatement tonight is only for that first 5,000-ton module. They refer to it as Phase Two. I'm going to go through my notes to see what I'm forgetting, as I deviate from what I expected to say there. I should go back and note that the research and development module, the 500-ton, the company had requested an abatement on that one. We reviewed that and we rejected that because the company had started construction already, and that does not meet one of the requirements for Business Oregon for tax abatements. So when that come, when that parcel, it is fully on the tax roll now. Reminder, it was Port of the Dells property before that, so generated no tax income. When it is assessed, it will be paying full tax on the improvements and on the, on the land. The tax abatement we're recommending tonight is only on the improvements. Any enterprise zone abatement occurs only on improvements to the land, is not, does not apply to the underlying land value. The rationale for an abatement, threefold. First off, 280 Earth's business model depends upon injection in, it's referred to as Class Six wells. These are monitored, established, controlled by the EPA, with a focus on protection of clean drinking water. So Class Six injection well is used in CO2 injection, oil and gas, other things, but they're located in the Midwest. There are none of these wells in Oregon or Washington. So part of the company's rationale and part of its challenge is the cost of transporting liquefied CO2 from its facility in the Dells to Wyoming or other points east of the Rockies. That's an operational cost that the abatement would help to defer. A second reason for that is simply a vote of confidence for investors. 280 Earth is a spinoff of Google Labs, Google X. Google has some interest in the company, it's a minority share, and that share is declining as they sell sale, shares, and continue to expand their investor base. But they would like to see basically a vote of confidence from the community that we want them here. And our recommendation is that by placing them here, by approving this first module, we would see continued expansion. The ultimate goal is a million tons or more per module. We can't do that at the Port of the Dells, there's not sufficient room, it would take a couple of hundred acres, but there is sufficient room elsewhere in this region, in the Columbia Gorge. Finally, one third reason is simply to put a stake, really, in the idea of the Dells as a center for this innovative technology. The State of Oregon, Oregon Growth Fund through the Oregon Treasury has, is one of the investors in this, their idea being that this aligns with state policy, reducing water use, for instance, from data centers, things of that nature, that we can, of course, have greater impact on climate change, and that aligns with where Oregon would like to go. So it'd be good to have the Dells as part of a role in that. Beyond that, I think that I've gone through my talking points. Jill is here to address any questions, and then I would like to offer Jacques the ability to go through his slides, if I may, defer to the mayor on how you would like to proceed, sir.
Sure, sure. Why don't we get, any questions for Dan before we hear from the gentleman from 280 Earth? I have one question, I don't know if it's for you or for him, but could you explain how a company derives revenue from selling carbon credits? How is, how does that work?
One carbon credit, now I'll ask Jacques to correct me here, equals one ton of carbon removed from the atmosphere. So if I am a polluting company, then I can buy carbon credits and in return have the knowledge that that much carbon has been removed from the atmosphere. It's a salient point, something I forgot to mention in my presentation, there are two different ways of removing carbon in, in this particular area. One is natural-based and one is mechanical. Natural-based carbon reduction is when you grow a forest someplace, somewhere, or you promise not to cut down a forest somewhere, and that's problematic. How do you measure that reduction? How do you prove that it's actually occurred? In this case, we have mechanical capture, so we are literally weighing the amount of carbon that's coming out, weighing it going into a tank and measuring the volume as it's injected, either do a Class Six well, or somewhere in the Northwest, if we ever develop a Class Six well, under basalt, where it actually combines with basaltic elements and is, forms a form of chalk, that's for permanent sequestration. Long answer, but thank you.
Okay. May I ask the gentleman how long the presentation is?
Like, three minutes is a little quick.
10 minutes?
10 minutes is more than enough.
I'll just defer to the council.
Yes.
Okay. Want to hear?
Yes.
Okay, you've got the, go ahead. Please introduce yourself and.
Hi. Hi, my name is Jacques Gagné, and I'm the Chief Technology Officer at 280 Earth. And we're here, 280 Earth is, as Dan, thank you very much for describing the technology so well, we're removing atmospheric CO2. In 1856, there was a discovery, this person put CO2 in a bottle and realized that if you put CO2 in air and put it in sunlight, the temperature of that air actually increases. That's where we are today. You're wondering why it's getting hotter, why it's getting drier, why it's getting wetter some places, it's basically that, there's too much CO2 up there. It was 280 from dinosaurs all the way till 1750, and now since 1750, due to everything we do, we're pretty much up to 430. So this is one of the technologies that is called a carbon negative technology. So the idea is to bring it back down. Of course, wind, solar, everything that we can do to stop putting extra CO2, but even if we stopped today putting CO2 in, we still have to take out a lot of what is already there. If we just relied on planting trees, we need three extra planets. You can't plant enough trees on this planet to correct quick enough. So we do need some mechanical help, and so this is where this machine. And I've been doing this kind of work, product development, since 1982, and I've been involved in climate ever since, I come from Quebec originally, and got lucky, and I went to San Diego in 1989, where I discovered, you don't have snow in San Diego. I never went back. And so part of the problem there was acid rain that was caused by sulfuric acid from coal plants back there, and NOx, which is nitric oxide. The bottom line is that problem everyone said couldn't be solved. We did solve it. We did, we stopped spitting that stuff so far out, those lakes that, all of the lakes the fish died, they're back. So it can't, things can be corrected, and that's what I plan to do with this technology, is correct the path for our children and my great-grandkids and great-grandniece and nephew, they asked me to do this, so this is my retirement. I plan to be doing this until I push daisies. If, next slide, please. So that's pretty, there's the machine, and please, I invite you all, if you ping my cellphone, be more than happy to give you a tour, it's kind of a fun device, it looks a little unique compared to most. Another slide, thank you. This is the inside, it's in a building. It doesn't need to be in a building, it's in a building now for safety reasons, because it's very windy here, and I didn't want anyone on the top deck on a prototype during windy times. It's all great to windsurf, but I wasn't planning for anyone to come off of that, windsurfing off the top of that tower. So what you're seeing here is on the left, that gray piece, that's where the air goes in, the air goes out, and I'll explain a little more, and where you see the yellow stairs going up, that's considered the tower. So I had mentioned a little bit about the climate change. One of the examples, the most, biggest example of, is last year, if you remember in Portland, I believe they hit 112. I don't think they had ever seen that before. These are examples of extreme heat, there's also extreme cold that comes with climate change. It's not just climate warming, it's just, it generally, that's what happens, but it also, cold weather can sneak in, Arctic, and it disrupts the weather pattern. So all of this means that some of the cooling towers is an example at the Dells, which mostly here are Google data centers, but this works just as well for Facebook and for Microsoft, or anyone who uses a cooling tower, which in the US, there's 8 million gigawatts of cooling towers. Where we designed this as a system where it actually cools the water as well, so we can take waste heat from a data center, and instead of them running it through their cooling towers and evaporating water, I can do it dry, as it's called. And also this system, for every ton of CO2 it captures, it captures two tons of water. So to give you an example of a cooling tower, if, for every 5,000 tons of CO2 I catch, I create or abate 27,000 tons of water. I create or abate 27,000 tons of water, which is really nice for the fish and for whatever aquifer is being bleed, uh, bled dry. Now here, that might not be as much of a problem, but in many areas, uh, on this planet is a big problem. So, um, the technology is to be proven here. Why the Dalles? You have ideal weather. You have, uh, you have basically cold, you have winter, you have snow, you have very hot summers, unfortunately. You have dry and you have beyond wet, as I call it. So that actually allows the system and its software to learn from these environments and actually get smarter. A lot of AI goes into this. It's custom software and it learns how to better utilize the temperatures around itself to actually do better cooling. And eventually, if we got the 20,000 here, we could almost abate three quarters of the evaporated water at TLK one, the data center. So it's significant and places like Vegas or Arizona, they really need these things that I prefer doing it here. Um, and I've been blessed by this area. I did not know that when I came here. I knew it because you had hydroelectric. We've had amazing partners, some of them are here, Hagi, and a lot of our partners have been just absolutely amazing. This plant went up in less than a, uh, year, which we would have never been able to do without, uh, talent and people that are there. And I could get it done. Next slide please. This is the staff that I manage at the, uh, at Los Gatos, which, uh, Mountain View. These are, um, all going to be ex-Google employee. Many of them are all, they're all going to be two eighty Earth. Google is no longer funding this project. This project has completely spun out since 2022 October. This is completely funded by our investor base. And one of my investors is a family which I'm very happy about because it's the nonprofit who's who owns it. So Doctors Without Borders, uh, Cancer Research. These are the people who profit when we make money, which is really kind of cool. Makes it even better for me, to be honest with you. It's not like someone very rich getting richer. Uh, next slide please. So what we do is thank you again, Dan. You explained it pretty much. We take ambient air, renewable electricity. We take waste heat, which lowers our amount of electricity needed. We return cooling service and clean water because the water that we collect is basically, if you take cold water or ice and put it on your table in the summer, what happens is sweats. That's condensate. That's what we end up with that comes out of our material and we return clean air. And the CO2, this is one of the reasons, um, we could use a break is you were mentioning about, uh, inflation. Well, inflation hit Union Pacific pretty good. Um, rail costs going to Wyoming have significantly increased. And so for us to move the CO2 from here to Wyoming for its permanent location has increased and it's making it our, my investors a little more, uh, about, uh, being in the Dalles. But I really want to be here. Next slide. This is basically how it works. It's a continuous process. What you're looking at is the little green dots is where, uh, it starts. That's the, uh, the particles, which when they drop through the airstream that's coming below it, shown by the blue dots, little white circles and the gray dots. Notice that when the green falls through it, it's picking up water and CO2. That goes up the other conveyor and goes into the desorption tower where the first stage takes out water and that goes to the water tank. The second stage takes the CO2 out of it and puts it into its tank. And then the green sorbit goes back and it's rinse and repeat. The sorbit is recyclable and rechargeable. There is basically no sewage in this at all. This, uh, creates water and it takes electricity. That's it. Next slide. Uh, the development, next slide. So our 500 ton, oh, that's too bad. The video doesn't work. Okay. Well, that video, again, if you have the tour, the, uh, video would show you the, uh, the plant as it was in December. Next slide, I think you've got some of the. This is where the 500 ton is now. This is lot 24. That's right beside the data center, uh, part of the part, or the Dalles. The, on the, went on the left, left is the 500 ton and the 5,000. Notice the 5,000 isn't 10 times bigger. That's because the 500 ton is the world's largest lab rat. Uh, I instrumented the debt. And the reason why is because the software is learning how best. It's basically AI. It's a little science fiction, not how, it's not like you're going to get destroyed. And, or, uh, Arnold's going to show up in the middle of it. It's, um, going to learn how to better utilize. So the 5,000 plant did not have to be 10 times bigger. So it's already, uh, proven, uh, to be hugely advantageous in this area. And the software is learning daily on the tests and, uh, for what we are doing. Next slide. Here's our, uh, partners in the area and I want to increase this. They've all been absolutely amazing. We've used Ironworks, Hagi, that's here. Uh, and we have, uh, our own two eighty Earth employees that are local. That has been just great. Everyone who, my team has come up, they've been, uh, well welcomed. And unfortunately for me, I'm gaining incredible amount of weight because of Cousins apple pie. So that has attacked me and she gives me a bigger and bigger scoop of ice cream every time. Pretty soon, I think she'll just bear me with it. But I go every day when I'm here, they know me by name. Same with the, uh, um, Fairfield Hotel.
Maybe you should add Cousins up there.
What's that?
Maybe you should add Cousins to your.
I should add Cousins, you know, because I think I am a partially an investor at this point. And whoever makes the pies for sure. And next slide. So that's where we are. We're right by, um, that's TLK one. And that's what our building looks like. The building, of course, the two black things that look like they're open, they're just louvers. The building is not heated. The idea is that it actually is just a containment wall. So it, uh, eventually it would not have to be housed. It's housed now because I want it to be. And eventually it will not have to be. So like for a million ton, of course, to reduce costs, I wouldn't have the building on all of them. So the 500 ton, uh, spending, we've already spent, uh, 13 million on the construction, 19 million, uh, regional economic activity. The 5,000 ton and the 20,000 expansion would bring us up to 130 to 195, right? Now the 5,000 is expected to cost roughly 50, 52. And so that's, uh, where we're at. Uh, next slide. And thank you. I think I did it in nine minutes, 20 seconds.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor McGlothlin.
How many potential jobs would be created by you coming to the Dalles?
Um, well, right now we have five per minute now, and I would hope that we go to 20 to, uh, to 30. And actually I would like to also expand our engineering here. Um, we do use the community college. Um, and I would like to have people, the stage, I'm not sure how to say that in English. Sorry, my first language is French, which would be working sessions for the community college to come in and to do work furloughs, I guess it might be called. Um, so we want to have as much, uh, local representation as possible because my intent, my intent is still to do a million tons in Oregon. You have the perfect rock. A salt rock is the best, uh, rock that you can possibly put CO2. When you put it, you were mentioning it was chalk. It's exactly that. When you look at the white cliffs of Dover, that's calcium carbonate all day long. And that is sequestered CO2. But we can take it back out of the sky and put it back in the ground where it came from. And when it sits in the ground, it stays there. And for the deep water aquifers, that's what we, um, that's what we're going to use today. That's two miles deep. It's not coming up. And it's fortunately, it needs to be looked at for a hundred years. The estimate is more like 10,000 years is how long it will stay sequestered. And if we're still, uh, have a problem in 10,000 years burning CO2, we don't learn too quick as a society.
I have another question. Why Wyoming to transport, uh, not, and not develop eastern Oregon or a shorter distance to.
That is my plan for the million ton. It's definitely what I would want to do. We would dig our own hole, which is a $40 million event. So for a million ton, uh, the, there is here, there's two different things in eastern Oregon. You have an aquifer that's right on the border of Washington.
Right.
And on, so you do have one there. So as I would build up capacity, then I could justify the $40 million. So then I would dig directly in. Fortunately for us, Union Pacific goes along. So that would be great because even the Dalles facility could go, uh, slightly east from here, about a hundred, 150 miles and then put this, uh, sequester directly in an aquifer, in a saltwater aquifer.
All right. Why not develop land on the Dallesport Peninsula as a potential expansion?
Where would this be?
It's the airport code.
Oh, yes, that's fine. I mean, I would have to check the geology. If I remember correctly, we're right on the edge of an aquifer here. But if it's here, why not? Because obviously I save enormous amounts of money if I can poke the hole right under my feet. The beauty of it is some people are worried that it would affect a, uh, drinking water aquifer. No, it's two miles deep. Uh, it is, um, basically you're injecting an ocean water at that point. It's salt water and it's way in it. Plus the way that the geology is, is there is a cap rock. Because of the way that the, um, volcanoes here have covered everything up. Once you're in the saltwater aquifers, you're covered by a cap rock that is considerably thick. That is impermeable to CO2. And what would leak through, would leak through very slowly and would be trapped by the basalt rock and turn into calcium carbonate, which is a white chalk.
Answers my questions.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Well, um, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Counselor Long.
Um, I was just going to highlight, he was asking about employees. And I know when I came out, uh, with Counselor Richardson, I took the tour with the CEO. He, um, introduced us to two of the local employees who already have the knowledge to work here. And so I just want to highlight that for people that although it's an incredibly technical field, we do have people right here already working.
Yes, we have four now, four or five. Four, four.
Anybody else?
I have some questions if you may.
Randall.
Uh, you mentioned the, um, injecting into the wells. Uh, what, what state is the CO2 in when it's injected? Is it liquid?
It's basically a 150, um, 150 bar would be the pressure, which is roughly, uh, two, 25.
How do you maintain that state once it's injected in the wells?
Once it's injected in the well, because of its depth, it just stays there. And the pressure because of the depth.
Okay. And so you mentioned, uh, the existence of water perhaps. What, what about other elements that may be existing? Won't that be displaced with the injection of that CO2?
The beauty, that's what the well, that's why it's good to put it in a well. What it does is it just, it basically mixes with some of the water and just basically displaces some of the salt water and replaces it with the CO2. Those two substances will make the world's largest soda water. But it does not like make an earthquake. It's not fracking of any kind. And it, uh, uses more like this, uh, dispersion. As you inject in one area, these wells can handle about like the one here, I believe is to like four gigatons of CO2. So it, you would have to put four gigatons in one well, even remotely feel pressure.
But, but you mentioned, uh, like shale oil and, and the use in fracking, isn't that?
Oh, that's, the, that is a class four well. We don't go there, we go much deeper.
But isn't, isn't the product that you produce, the CO2, it is used by shale companies, I believe to.
We do not allow that at two eighty Earth. That is used like, uh, you have, um, climate engineer, some of our competition will allow it. EOR as it's called, enhanced oil recovery. We don't want to do that.
Okay.
Climeworks is another company that has taken our stance. We will not enhance oil recovery. And it's kind of defeated purpose. I'm fine doing it. Like if someone tells me we're just going to displace a, a little bit. And for aircraft fuel, because I, I don't see aircraft fuel, uh, going away anytime soon. I'm not sitting on a thermos with hydrogen on a, a transatlantic. It's just not going to happen in my lifetime. So it's going to be liquid fuel. So if someone's going to offset that fuel, eventually the CO2 will not be injected in the ground three, four years, uh, from now. As a matter of fact, I believe in some of the universities in, uh, both Portland and, uh, Washington State, they're looking at SAT, which is synthetic, uh, air, air aviation fuel, which is you take CO2 and you take hydrogen and you can actually make the basics of, uh, artificial aviation fuel. As an airplane is going to like, acid is liquid fuel is very efficient. There's a reason we use it. It doesn't need to be pressurized. It fits in a tank. And, uh, when you look at someone loading it on an airplane, it look, it's pretty easy. He's got a hose, hits it, hits a button. Hydrogen would not be the same thing. It would load a huge thermos in the bottom of the plane. I'm not sitting.
There was an article in the local paper talked about how this could be operated off grid. If, as long as you had a power plant nearby, what, what would the capacity of that power plant need to be? For instance, for this facility or?
Uh, for the one here, we don't use much power. For a large million ton, you would need about 200 megawatt.
Okay, thank you.
And it is intention, uh, my, again, my dream is to be off grid where you would have, I call it the infinity refineries, which is basically you would have your CO2, your big land plot of CO2. You would have either a geothermal plant or even if you had to go natural gas, but you would catch the CO2 from the natural gas, creating a carbon negative environment. Batteries or wind or solar, obviously if I have wind and solar, that's better. And then that would work on its own. It would never, it would not need to be plugged to the grid. As a matter of fact, we do plan to buy offsets. Um, basically power purchase agreements to encourage other companies to put in new solar. Like right now, we're using green power from the, uh, hydroelectric dam. But then that's displacing someone else's green power. So we are actually promoting to replace that green power in the vicinity.
I think my last question, I think it's more for Dan. Did you mention the state of Oregon is, is investing in this?
Yeah, the, the Oregon Growth Fund, I believe. So this is not the US Treasury, but I did speak with the, um, uh, Dimitri Palmetier is a, uh, chief of staff to the state treasurer to confirm that. And my understanding is that they are one of the investors in this. Again, because they see alignment with, uh, with state policy.
So that direct financial investment or is that in the form of tax abatements or credits?
You know the answer to that? My understanding is direct.
It will be direct. It hasn't been.
Hasn't been finalized yet.
Yes, but, uh, they were very excited about it because it is, this is the first of its kind of this type of machine, the continuous. It's the first that can do heat reuse. So it's like a double whammy, right? Because it's taking CO2 out of the air. It's also avoiding the power used to run the fan that evaporates the water from the, uh, data center. So it does, it catches CO2 and avoids your neighbor, um, um, putting more CO2 up and evaporating more.
Tobias Reed, the state, uh, treasurer has visited the site.
That is correct. I think he's running for, uh, state.
So regardless of, if, even if it's a direct investing, it's still taxpayer funded. Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
It's still taxpayer funded.
Not right now.
I mean, as far as the state of Oregon, uh, the Oregon Growth Fund.
No, so I'm sorry, I'm investment advisor and I'm not giving investment advice. But what happens is when people put their money into the Oregon Growth Fund, then the state takes that and they invest it. And so part of that is being invested into Earth two eighty.
Thank you, Counselor Long. I could not have answered that question. I'm glad that you were able to. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, two, two things, one about dollars and one about water, kind of the two things I always seem to end up talking about. Uh, one is just for fellow counselors that did, uh, have a conversation with our illustrious assessor. And the three-year tax abatement, which is, uh, administratively, uh, authorized is likely to come in at, uh, uh, forgone taxes of something in the order of $2 million or 2.1 million. And the question forced tonight is essentially, do we bump that up to five years? Graduated step down abatements that would be maybe on the order of 2.8.
Fifty-year abatement in fourth year and 25 abatement, uh, 25% abatement in the fifth year.
So our decision is really 700-ish thousand dollars of abatement over a couple of years to support, uh, this, uh, this project.
Are you still on questions like that?
Yes, that sounds about right.
Correct.
Excellent, thank you. I'm, uh, excited by your project, Jacque. That was good to see. Uh, I hope that it goes very well. That said, I think it makes no sense for us as a city to countenance a test well or, um, uh, a storage well in our immediate environment. It just, there's always unforeseen circumstances, changes of technology, uh, uh, consequences, the unforeseen consequences. So I'd really like it to, uh, to dig a very big well. A little farther east somewhere. I, I understand the chemistry seems very straightforward. It's chalk, no big deal. It's not, we don't always know all of the impacts of our actions ahead of time, no matter how simple they seem.
I agree with that.
So I'm curious, and this is a question for staff, uh, I suppose. Could we, uh, uh, support the, uh, five-year abatement contingent upon two eighty Earth signing an agreement or negotiating an agreement such that there are no wells, test wells or, or storage injection wells within the city or, or the port or some designated area?
This would be absolutely no problem because right now our plan for the next five and until I get to a million, it would never be cost effective and we can't put it in here. Definitely be going Wyoming right now. That's the well that's been approved by the EPA. They've already done all the land study. And so, and it's a direct shot, the Union Pacific, expensive, but it's the way to do it.
Counselor Richardson, to your point about the agreement. So, uh, we have concurrence from the port and the county and staff direction has been that those, the city, the county and the port uh, agree and support a, a five year abatement. The next step would be a written agreement with the company. So, um, uh, we will be drafting that. We're using a template from earlier five year agreements. And so that would be something that could be, could well be written into that.
Would that need to be part of a motion this evening?
That could well be part of them, yes, certainly.
Yeah, I don't see the need for it, but as long as we understand it's going to be in the agreement and you've obviously agreed to it.
Absolutely no problem to me.
It's on the record.
And if it does not hinder you at all, then that's, that's great. I certainly, uh, I sleep late, help me sleep better. I don't want, don't want to be signing on to something with, uh, without, um, that abundance of caution with regard to our aquifer and our water supply.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Long.
Um, I agree with you. I don't think it's necessary to put in the agreement and I feel like we're setting a bad precedent for questioning the experts on the science. They've come to us with a proposal that's been approved and been researched through the EPA. And, um, they talked to us when we were there about putting, um, the CO2 in possibly into basalt. We don't know what's going to happen in the next five years with technology. And I don't feel like we should be limiting ourselves. Obviously, they're not going to be able to do anything that the EPA or other, um, what am I trying to say? Entities that, um, that they have to go through are gonna, they're not going to get approval for anything that is dangerous to us. And that would be something else. They can't put it on that property where they're at right now. So they would need a separate tax abatement in order to do it.
Given that we have two federally listed super fund sites within the city limits, I guess I don't rely on the EPA to wholly guarantee no negative environmental effects for us.
Right, but based on your work, you know what the science is with carbon dioxide and water. And you know, you can't get a super fund site out of that.
Just to clarify, I was suggesting that it not be part of the motion, not part of the agreement. So, um, I suppose whoever makes the motion can get that clarified. Any other questions?
I just have a question about the, what are we actually approving or disapproving? The three year abatement has already been granted or could be granted outright, but we're still going to vote for the full five year deal.
Three here has not been, uh, not been granted.
Could be.
Uh, yeah, the recommendation is a, a motion to approve a five year abatement.
Three years at a hundred percent, fourth year at fifty.
Uh, yes.
Fifth year at seventy five.
Fifty percent in the fourth year, twenty five percent abatement in the fifth year. Uh, community service fee, uh, to be negotiated.
With the understanding and a, a formal agreement will be coming before the council, the county and the port commission.
That is correct.
In the next couple of months.
Or sooner, actually. That will be expedited once we have approval here tonight. I should mention too that, um, Matt and Shannon Hagey are here in the audience. Major contractor to the project.
Mr. Mayor.
There they are. Yes.
I had a question for, uh.
I had a question, though, but.
I insist, go ahead.
Um, did I understand that you to say that Google is no longer an investor?
That is correct. They, they own some founder stock, not them. They, uh, since October twenty twenty two, we are fully funded from the outside. Google is not putting a dime into this company.
Isn't that a change of heart or is that just?
No, that's just how it works. That's when, when a company gets, and it's called an external moonshot. Once it's deemed that it shouldn't live within Google, it's literally a spin out. So you are no longer part of the mothership. They would, they keep founder stock because some of the tech I developed while I was at Google. But now they don't put any more money in. So we are basically flying on our own. And that means we gotta save our nickels and make sure that we can make this thing profitable or we flop like anyone else. Yeah, we don't have Google's check.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kara?
I just had a clarifying question for, uh, Mr. Spots. It seems that council may have to make a decision tonight, but I'm not so sure it does. Are there any outside factors that would require the city council to approve this abatement tonight? It sounds like council's hoping for an agreement to be brought before the port commission as well as the county commission and back here again in the future. So I'm just wondering the degree to which a motion even needs to be made. It sounds like staff has sufficient direction to present, uh, an agreement.
If there is no uncertainty as to the direction from council, we would proceed with an agreement. Uh, we had concurrence from the county. We had a, a vote from the port. Um, as long as, uh, concurrent support, I guess, uh, Matthew, if you have any experience on how we might proceed with that, I would move with the, uh, the agreement. Does the agreement, I, I'll, I'll throw a question back to you. Does the agreement need to come back for a formal vote or would it be a pro forma, uh, signature by the mayor?
So it, it depends. If, uh, if council makes a motion here tonight approving the terms of this abatement as presented, uh, whether or without a well in the city limits, whatever council wants. And they authorize the city manager to execute that agreement, then it does not need to come back to council. Uh, if they don't make that motion and they say, okay, sounds good, go make an agreement and bring it back to us. Well, then, yeah.
I would suggest the first route is preferable because I know the company would like to, uh, move as quickly as they can.
So those are some of the external factors I wanted to.
Exactly.
Bring up, okay.
Exactly.
Yes, Joe.
Just, just a reminder that this project and this entity does meet the requirements of the program. And that's what we're looking at, not choosing winners or losers and meet the requirements of this program.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I, I have one, just very quick logistics question because I'm curious. Where is the, the loading point or the transfer point onto the railroad?
Right now, the thought is to use cherry road, is that correct?
Cherry Road.
A spur that's down there?
Yeah.
Okay. Pacific Coast Producers. Yeah, okay, just curious. Thank you.
Okay. We're, 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 we're considering here a, a tax abatement, which, um, I don't know, I for one would like to see a formal agreement come back to the council, but I'll leave that up to the city council to make the appropriate motion. Is, is two months, uh, put you in any kind of bind?
Um, I would like to, honestly, I would like to break ground as soon as I possible because the climate, uh, the CO2 is just piling up. So I would like to get going on it, to be honest with you.
All right.
Motion?
Go ahead, counsel.
I'll move to approve a five year extended enterprise zone tax abatement for two eighty earth as detailed contingent upon approval from Wasco County and Port of the Dells.
McLaughlin will second.
It's been moved by Counselor Long and seconded by Counselor McLaughlin to approve the five year enterprise zone tax abatement. Is there any more discussion?
Would the two of you accept, uh, an amended motion to add upon a staff negotiated agreement prohibiting a test well or injection well in the city of the Dallas?
I would not.
Okay. Did you want to say something?
No. I was thinking about it, but I'm.
Okay, we're going to have to call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion by Counselor Long and seconded by Counselor McLaughlin, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I got two to one.
Nay.
Did you vote?
I, I said aye, but it was.
Okay, the motion passes three to one. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, counselors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good luck.
Thank you, and rest assured, we're incredibly careful. The whole point is to help the environment, not destroy it. Good luck.
Thank you. Okay, item eleven B. Consideration of a recommendation to approve a, or to authorize a lease with KDLS Aircraft and Storage, Mr. Jeff Renaud.
Honorable there in city council. Uh, that's a tough act to follow there. The, I have a a land lease for you. KDLS Aircraft Storage is a Washington Limited Liability Corporation with Josh Coombs and Rob Gilchrist. The members of this are both pilots at our airport and they've requested to construct a sixty by one twenty, hundred and twenty foot hangar for aircraft storage adjacent to one of the new taxi lanes we just put in with our grant project. They'll be the first construction on that new, new project that we've just completed. The site they desire is one of the I've covered that. The developers have met all the application requirements for the airport and are now working with Clicktack County planning for their approvals. Staff is seeking to have attached twenty year lease with the option for two ten year extensions approved also as per the airport policy. The airport and its sponsors have the first right of refusal should they choose to sell this property. The the developments are all, sorry.
Something's going on.
Kind of hard, that's kind of hard to stay focused on. And there's more. They're continuing. Okay, it'll have, it's a twenty year, twenty year lease with two ten year extensions. The possibility of two ten year extensions. Per the airport policy, the airport and its sponsors always have the first right of refusal on any sale of any developments on the airport. These developments are also part of the forty year reversionary clause associated with our federal grant assurances, which in turn means that if they reach their, the forty year life of that building, it reverts back to the airport ownership. So we would actually end up with the asset at the end of the forty year term. The airport board has recommended the approval of the land lease with KDLS Aircraft Storage LLC during the March twenty ninth board meeting. The budget implications associated with this are for our established land lease rates of twenty cents per square foot of, for aviation lots, the land lease rate for the seventy two hundred square foot building will be fourteen hundred and forty dollars per year. As per our airport lease agreements, the land leases are all subject to our CPI increases of two point six percent annually. And staff's recommendation is moved to authorize the city manager to enter into the lease with KDLS Aircraft Storage LLC as presented contingent upon approval from Clicktack County.
Any questions for Mr. Renaud?
None.
Looking for a motion.
I will do that, sir. I moved to authorize the city manager to enter into a lease with KDLS Aircraft Story LLC as presented contingent upon approval from Clicktack County.
Second that.
It's been moved by Counselor McLaughlin and seconded by Counselor Long to authorize the city manager to enter into the lease agreement with KDLS. Is there any more questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item twelve A. Council rules, it's a discussion and I go ahead, Counselor Earth, uh, city attorney Jonathan Kara.
Thank you very much, Mayor Mays, city council. This staff report's presented by me and the city clerk, but she has to man the, um, the computer system. And so, uh, I'm, I'm confident her mic works if anybody has any questions for her. Um, and so this is almost going full circle at its June twelfth, twenty twenty three regular meeting. Council directed staff to commence the process of revising the city council rules and code of conduct policy by reviewing our current rules, which are attached in your staff report and were last updated in January twenty twenty for legal sufficiency and updating them consistent with some governance best practices. Both a copy of staff's proposed rules and the existing rules are included, uh, attached to the staff report. And, uh, as I mentioned later on in the staff report, there's, um, some guides there to help reference and cross reference those different sections as they appear. This project, uh, took nearly eleven months to work on. It was a completely comprehensive, um, top to bottom revision to the, uh, current council rules. Not necessarily just for substance, but also for organization and for future proofing them consistent with some very dynamic changes in uh, Oregon and federal laws, uh, relating to, um, the First Amendment and public meetings and government ethics. Um, and so you might notice that, um, the way that we decided to structure these was to, um, indicate on the, on the very first page, um, some rules are waivable and some rules are not by council. Uh, and so the idea here is that, you know, for any given particular situation, council has and retains the authority to govern its proceedings. And I wanted to be very clear about the certain rules for new counselors and for current counselors and the mayor. Um, the, the, the rules that could be waived in a council meeting and the rules that couldn't. And so, um, just keep in mind, uh, you know, hopefully as you review this going into, um, whatever this comes back to you all for an action item, um, that anything listed in section one and in section two are prescribed by the charter. And absent an amendment to the charter, which requires a popular vote of the people of the city of the Dells, those rules are not waivable. But anything else starting in section three and onward is fair game for council to waive and in any given circumstance, should the situation, um, call for it. With that said, typically what you'd see if, if somebody asked me to provide some revisions to a document is a red line. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the, the sheer breadth of the changes that we looked at and examined while we were putting this together, a, a red line would not meaningfully help anybody understand what's changed. And so instead, um, instead, there are some notations in the margins of each section of the old rules that loop back to, uh, where that rule sort of ended up, um, in the proposed rules. And if you don't see a notation next to an old rule, that means that that old rule is no longer in, uh, the new proposed rules. There's so much here, um, and I'm happy to talk about any of it. But in particular for tonight, um, I did want to call out four separate areas and I'd, I'd probably want to go one at a time and make sure that staff has good direction. And that, that's, that's the express intent of tonight's discussion item. It's just to make sure that we have some direction because there are some decision points that we believe council should weigh in on, uh, before we present this as an action item. Starting on page one sixty six of your packet. Item number one is the rule concerning ordinance adoption. And so very, very generally, ordinance adoption is a function of our charter. Typically, and, and under our, under our current charter, ordinance requires, an ordinance becoming effective and adopted by council typically requires two meetings. Except it can be accomplished at one council meeting if, uh, council votes unanimously to, uh, approve the ordinance. And it's available to the public one week in advance. Uh, an issue I wanted to flag is connected with a different part of our charter that talks about substantive amendments to ordinances. And very, you know, uh, very, it gives a tremendous amount of flexibility to the city, but it's a potential concern I wanted to mention. Effectively, the city council could amend an ordinance, uh, the night of its first hearing effectively. And they can amend it substantively. And all they, all the council would need to do is to read the changes into the record. And that would satisfy the charter's requirements for the adoption of the ordinance. So here's a practical example, and it's a complete hyperbole. And there are so many things wrong with this example, but really just to illustrate the point. Uh, currently, under the charter, the city could notice an ordinance like we do. And let's say in this example, the city's prohibiting off-road vehicles from being in the public right of way. And we publish, publish an ordinance that prohibits off-road vehicles from being in the public right of way. And, you know, in the ordinance, there's a definition for what an off-road vehicle is. And it's, you know, side by sides or whatever, off-road vehicles you can imagine. Then the night of the city council meeting where council's hearing that ordinance for the first time, it says, you know what? This is a great ordinance. I'd love to make it just a little bit broader. Let's go ahead and amend the definition of an off-road vehicle to include all SUVs. Well, council could do that so long as it read that change into the record. And council could adopt that ordinance unanimously that night. But it doesn't really provide interested persons a meaningful opportunity to provide their comments. And it doesn't really give, uh, any public participation whatsoever. And so that's a concern that's addressed already at the state level when it comes to land use laws. Under the state's land use laws, which preempt the cities, they've already handled that. They've said, if what you noticed isn't reasonably close to what you end up passing, it's, uh, voided unless you provided additional notice. And so. And so staff's hoping for some council direction on whether it would like to apply that same concept that's already applicable to the city for land use to all ordinances, not just land use. And I'm happy to explain more on that if I need to. But that would be a great point to hear from council first. You very rarely will hear me advocating for less flexibility. I'd like to keep the city's opportunities broad. But there's some concern here that this could be applied and in ways that might harm the public's interest, even if it benefits the city in the future. And so I just wanted to flag it.
So the key to this is what would constitute a substantive change that would necessitate kicking it over to, is that?
Something, something that isn't procedural in nature. So, you know, let's say some ordinance gives the public fourteen days to do something. If the, if the city council said, you know what, fourteen days seems a little long, let's make it ten days or seven days. That's not a substantive amendment, really.
It would be a council decision as to whether or not the change would be considered
Certainly.
substantive enough.
Certainly. They'd have to make a motion, you know, as amended and then read aloud the change that the council's hoping to make.
Any feedback from the council to our city attorney? We have a problem with what he's suggesting.
I want to be clear, Mr. Mayor, I'm not suggesting anything. I wanted to, uh, get council's input. I have absolutely no opinion on this that anyone's asked for.
Does anybody have a problem with what the city attorney has put forward without an opinion?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. And we talk a lot here over the last eight years that I've been on council, I think even probably before that about transparency and making sure the public is involved and that people don't feel like, you know, we're slipping things through on them. So this is just a great way just to make sure that that happens. Everybody has a chance. I think.
I agree.
Everybody okay with that? Is that sufficient feedback?
Yep, and, uh, I'll go ahead and draft up, uh, some changes to that, uh, portion of the proposed rules consistent with that. Okay, that's easy enough. Moving on. Right underneath that, still on page one sixty six, uh, this is connected with meeting notice. And so let me, let me just paint you a picture of what the rest of this week is going to look like for city staff. Tonight's Tuesday. Very rarely do we meet on Tuesdays, but that's okay. So today's Tuesday, the twenty eighth. Under our current city council rules, uh, and by the way, we have our next city council meeting, I believe, is, uh, uh, June tenth, which is sometime away. Under our current city council rules, the agenda must be published ten days before the next regular meeting. Ten days before June tenth is Friday, this Friday, May thirty first. So the agenda needs to go out this Friday, May thirty first. The ASRs, the staff reports that you're reading right now, for example, for this agenda item, those are due to the city clerk the day before the thirty first at noon. So that's effectively, well, that, that is noon this Thursday, the thirtieth. By the time we get out here tonight, I hope no city staffers are going to be still working. Tomorrow is Wednesday. A full eight hour day plus four hours on Thursday gives us twelve working hours between the end of tonight's meeting and the time that the next ASRs are due for the, for the following council meeting to put together anything that council might have asked the city staff to do at tonight's meeting. I hope that there's nothing coming out of this meeting that's going to be requiring a ton of work because while we only have twelve hours to get it done to be consistent with the council's current policy. And this is sort of just to emphasize how it can be. Typically, that ten day cutoff on, on months that have only, you know, uh, two weeks between all meetings, staff has less than seventy two hours at most after a council meeting to research, prepare and provide to the city clerk an agenda item and agenda staff report. If council wants to hear it at the next meeting. And so the city is hoping for some direction here from its council on truncating and, and, and giving us a little bit more flex, flexibility with respect to the time for posting agendas. Currently, it's ten days before the city council's regular meetings. State law, just for the record, is only twenty four hours before that meeting. Now, uh, the staff isn't suggesting that, um, it will be publishing agendas twenty four hours before their meeting, before the next council meeting. I think that that's going too far on one end. That, that would be my recommendation would be to avoid, you know, saying at least twenty four hours. At most, it should be twenty four hours. Typically, what we've seen and the city clerk has done some research on this with other Oregon jurisdictions, we see a range varying between five and seven days. And so the way that I have drafted this for the proposed rules is to, um, sort of require the city clerk's office to, um, is encouraged, uh, they are encouraged to publish agendas within seven days, but must notice those agendas within twenty four hours, uh, just to remain consistent with state law. And so the city would appreciate some guidance here on this point as well.
So you're asking for the council's opinion on, uh, changing the ten days to say five or seven?
Something like that.
I, I think that's a great idea. I've never understood why we have ten days in the first place. I don't know of another city that has that long. I think it puts a tremendous burden on the staff and I don't really see a need for it. So I would suggest either five or seven days.
Well, I have a question. I mean, part of it is that we're trying to encourage people who are not necessarily retired to participate and it does take, it does currently allow for two weekends for people to review. Plus, if you have questions, um, you have a chance to get ahold of staff and you only have the five days of the week or, and I guess if you contacted them on the Monday of the meeting. But, um, I thought that you could put out the agenda and meet the meeting notice, but add a supplemental staff report later. So it's not really prohibiting the publishing of the agenda. If you can send out, it can take more time if you need to.
Totally.
A lot of the agendas are already pre-packed.
What do you mean?
Well, they're, um, even up like a month ahead, he kind of knows already what's going to be on it unless something, it's a kind of like a one off. If something is asked for, for the next meeting, it's not usually a surprise. It's usually stuff that's been
Oh, that's true. Right. That's true. But I, um, and I'll let the city manager speak on this administrative issue. And I encourage the city clerk to weigh in as well. Despite the fact that, yeah, absolutely. It gives the public a tremendous amount of notice and, uh, uh, plenty of opportunity to review. And I know how busy everybody is. I, I believe that that is, as I mentioned, I think twenty four hours beforehand is a little ridiculous, but that's what the state of Oregon allows.
Right, but that's like, okay, we need to have an emergency meeting tomorrow. So the twenty four hours is so if we're having something that's only twenty four hours away, it's not designed for regular bi-weekly or monthly meetings. Can be used, but it's not, that's not the point.
The, the law currently says, uh, if for city council regular meetings, so long as the agenda is put out by five thirty Sunday night, it's all good. That's, that's currently the law. That's certainly not our practice. Uh, and as I mentioned, it, I believe it's pretty extreme because it really doesn't provide any meaningful input for the public. On the other hand, literally on the other extreme, ten days, it's not like the end of the world, but cumulatively, it has a sort of cascading effect on city staff and our ability to turn things around. With that in mind, and, and what I'm, uh, recommending is something a little bit closer to the middle. I could totally see keeping it at ten days as well. Um, but again, I'd like, I defer to the city staff, uh, city manager and the city clerk to weigh in on some of these administrative issues.
Well, I think one thing that I would add, and you were probably referencing my crazy whiteboard in my office, but, um, you know, we do try and manage the agendas. We try and keep these meetings to the best of our ability under three hours ideally, um, for example. And, uh, so we try and plan out to the best of our ability, what items are coming up. We do have reschedules and we need to shift things around due to new developments or new information and whatnot. I would say that we, despite the organizational efforts we put into it, we are making, um, adjustments to the agenda pretty, pretty close to that, that limit. Either because something can wait a little bit longer. We want to, you know, uh, uh, have one less item on the agenda. We have executive sessions that come up, and so we do make those adjustments quite often. After these city council meetings, uh, we typically have a leadership team meeting tomorrow morning, and that's one of the first things that we review is the outcome from this meeting and then what the next two agendas, uh, look like. Part of the reason for that is because we just had this meeting. It's fresh, but also because we need to get these other pieces in place. The other thing I might mention, the other thought that comes to my mind is I understand the intent of putting out an agenda and having supplemental information later. That would require someone to check twice in essence, which is, which is not the end of the world. It could also interject some confusion though, if that agenda goes out with what we hope to be in the packet, but then the, you know, for whatever reason, something needs to be delayed or something needs to be added. And then the supplemental either has an additional item or something removed. Again, just the two, I, I pause at the two step, uh, portion for a couple of those reasons.
Well, I definitely don't want to be seeing staff reports less than seven days prior to the meeting. It's already sometimes a a big lift to get through the material in a, in a thorough fashion. I'm okay. Jonathan's asking for, our city attorney is asking for direction. For my part, I think seven days is acceptable as opposed to ten. I wouldn't go any shorter than that. I think five's too short.
Counsel McLaughlin.
This is for the city clerk. Is the current policy placing a hardship on staff on your position?
Placing hardship on our staff?
Yes, you and
I would say that there are times when I think they are feeling rushed to play the staff report. For, for me, hardship for me. No, I become concerned when we have to make a lot of adjustments and we have supplementals and as city manager said, that can be confusing later. I think this would help to avoid that. We had everything uh, with a little bit longer timeline. And so we were, we were more confirmed by Friday before, instead of a Wednesday before having everything out.
So you're looking at instead of ten days, seven days?
Seven days. And I had, um, asked my association of municipal recorders in Oregon what, what they do and the majority were seven days. There were a few that were five days. There was one other that was ten days. But five days seemed to be the one that was the most common.
To be clear too, that they're reducing it from ten to seven days would reduce the number of times we've had to amend the agenda, right? I think that's what you were getting at.
Yeah.
So I see benefits in making an, an, an adjustment. And I agree that seven days seems to be the magic number right now that I'm hearing. Is that correct?
Well, that's what Council Richardson suggested, and it sounds like you're agreeing with him.
I am.
Anybody else?
I agree.
Okay, you got it.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mayor Mays. Okay, uh, just two more points I wanted to flag. Of course, council, um, feel free to ask any questions connected with the rules. Item number three at the top of page one sixty seven is connected with, uh, public comment. We have included some updated public comment rules after a serious review of Oregon and federal constitutional laws and updates and public meetings laws and updates. And LOC's recommended best practices. Some of the changes, um, that you might see in the new proposed rules as drafted on, on page seven of the, of the proposed rule packet is, uh, limiting the public comment portion of the meeting to, um, a time certain fifteen minutes. Total time. As well as individually, uh, binding an upper limit for the number of commenters to be three minutes per commenter at the upper limit, depending on the number of commenters available. If there are fifteen commenters, um, that would be a minute each, right? That seems a little ridiculous. But more, more often than not, what you'll end up finding is, um, other jurisdictions that have adopted similar rules will end up having, um, just like this city council has frequently waived the three hour cap that's been artificially imposed on our city council meetings. Very commonly, you'll find city councils that have, you know, have a need and they see a lot of people in the audience on a given night for a particular reason. They'll very simply just waive this requirement. Another change that's, uh, being recommended here, coming straight from the LOC, its executive director and general counsel, um, is to, uh, restrict the city council and, and the mayor frankly, from responding to public comments and engaging in a back and forth, uh, dialogue with the public during that portion of the meeting. The, uh, number one best practice still currently advised from LOC with respect to public comment is to refer all questions to the city manager. And certainly that's if a response from the city is requested, but generally as well, um, for the city manager to follow up with the commenter. And, uh, if it's a matter of public import, or if it's a matter that the, the city manager determines the city council needs to be, um, informed about and, and the resolution of that matter, then the city manager can certainly address the city council at any time, or even at the next city council meeting during the city manager's report with the outcome. Um, and we've also incorporated some changes concerning, um, the ability for, uh, the public to sign up, to provide public comment, whether that is, um, in person, public comment, we've, you, you might have noticed over the past few months, the city staff's already been, um, working with a signup sheet. This would just sort of, uh, formalize that and, and reflect our current practice. As well as address some electronic, uh, virtual access practices that are stemming from the result of, uh, two separate Zoom bombing incidents that, that, that have happened in the last two years here in the city, city of the Dalles. And so there's a lot of changes there. Happy to hear any thoughts and the council would, uh, the staff would very much appreciate council's direction with respect to these proposed public comment changes that again, they come straight from the LOC and, and our review of, uh, Oregon and federal constitutional laws.
Well, I'll weigh in first if nobody else wants to.
Clarification on bombing. When you have a Zoom meeting and someone, uh, logs in with the intention of disrupting and the proceeding, then that's what a bombing is.
And we've experienced it twice.
Yes.
So there's no question. I was just making a comment.
Oh, I see.
I, I don't know if people would know what that was.
Right.
Did you have a question, Council Richardson?
Oh, no, I have a comment.
Well, you, you want to go first?
Yeah, sure. I don't, uh, I don't support having, uh, a variable amount of time for people to make public comment. I think a, a three minute limit is a, a hard limit is something people can understand. They can come and they can make their point. And if it goes beyond fifteen minutes, uh, you know, so be it, uh, happens rarely, but occasionally. And I also don't want to fill up fifteen minutes if there's one person here that, that can fill the time. We have other business to, to deal with. So I'd say three minutes, come one, come all.
Thank you.
I agree with that. I don't think we should be limiting it to fifteen minutes. And I also have a problem with the part about prohibiting counselors and the mayor from responding to public comment. I mean, I know Counselor Long has, uh, a couple of times looked at me to step in when people get up and say things to us that are just blatantly untrue. And I don't think I for one would have a lot of problem sitting here and listening to somebody lie or say things that aren't true to us and not being able to respond or set the record straight. Uh, so I have, I have a problem with that one. And I think allowing people to sign up is helpful, uh, in advance. I do not think we should require it. I think if anybody wants to speak before the city council for three minutes, they should, they should, uh, it'd be helpful to sign in, but I don't think we should make it a requirement. I think a lot of people come to these meetings not understanding that they can sign up. And if we make it a requirement, I suppose they could get used to it, but I, I just have, I have a problem with those three issues myself.
On the flip side, I think also prohibiting any kind of response. I mean, it's kind of like they're just talking to a brick wall. I mean, I'm, I'm from their perspective. It's like, we just sit here and listen. Don't say anything. Don't have any reaction to it or.
Yeah, and, um, Mr. Major, just to respond to, to some of these comments. Counsel Randall and Richardson and, and yourself, uh, you've all identified some of the competing, uh, arguments here. Uh, that's absolutely what the design here is. That, that, that's exactly right for the city council to be a wall when it comes to public comment. Now, I, I'm certainly not recommending it. It's proposed because that's what the LOC's best practices are. With that said, there are some opportunities to compromise, um, and that, you know, without risking too much liability for the city. I think one of the more common approaches there is to, um, have the rules allow mayor, uh, the mayor or counselors to ask clarifying questions. And so for example, earlier today, the, the public commenter, um, made a comment about filling the survey and Counselor Long jumped in to ask clarifying question with, uh, with respect to whether that survey was the official one or the unofficial Facebook survey. That would have been, um, that was a great question. It was a great clarifying question. And that, that's exactly what the spirit of, of restriction that would allow counselors to respond in clarifying ways, uh, would address. Similarly, uh, Mr. Mays, the example you used about somebody being up there and, uh, saying things that aren't true about the city or the city council or the mayor. You, you know, if we had a provision in here that would incorporate allowing the council to respond to clarify a point, I think that would be addressed under clarification as well. And so I would recommend, as opposed to keeping it open the way that it is now, to have a little bit more of a grip on the authority of the city council to regulate public comment. And I would say that the compromise there, which is not the LOC's recommended best practice, but I think would, you know, can be sufficiently mitigating, the, the city can sufficiently mitigate the risk would be to have, have a provision that would allow clarifying questions and clarifying comments from the city council and the mayor.
I have a question.
Counselor Long.
What exactly, when you say the cities negating the cities risk, a risk of what? Being insulted by the public or getting into some?
No, I mean.
Discussion or?
No, no. I mean, I mean, well, legal risk, so legal liabilities. I believe you attended, as well as Mr. Mays, at the LOC had a training conference at the Fort Dallas Readiness Center last year. And some city staff was there as well. And it was presented by the executive director for the LOC, Patty Mulhovo. And she gave pretty much the same advice that I'm indicating she gave in this staff report to you all then. And you were all in the room and you all heard her yourself. And I believe Mayor Mays asked her the question himself with respect to this issue. Mayor Mays, do you remember that? Do you remember what she said to you?
No, I don't even remember the question I asked.
You asked her the same question you're asking us now. Which is, which is, I, I don't really like that. Do we really have to do that? And, and she said, you know, you don't have to, but you know, I'm just trying to prevent you from getting sued or something like that.
Okay, but in relation to Counselor Long's question.
Oh, well, no, not about the specific risk, but I mean, this concept came up. And Patty's recommendation then is still the same recommendation that the LOC, LOC gave me the week that I drafted this staff report because I wanted to double check, which is there's a lot of risks to avoid. The first is to provide, but by allowing the mayor or council who aren't staff, like the city manager, to respond to the public comments about the city's affairs or the city's business. There's a risk that the information that a mayor or a counselor gives could be incomplete or wrong, even if there is no malice on, on the part of the city council or the mayor to convey that information. They just may have not the right information, which is something that we would ordinarily expect the city manager to have on, on a given topic. Secondly, there's risks of constitutional claims of censoring free speech. If somebody comes up and is not afforded identical, and I mean uniformly identical opportunities for public engagement with the city council or the mayor, there's risks that it could be perceived that the council is censoring certain people and not others. The, the example that Patty gave at that Fort Dallas Readiness Center meeting last year was you have a Girl Scout come in and she's selling Girl Scout cookies and she's just the cutest little Girl Scout in the world. I think that's exactly how Patty said it. And the council is just enamored by her and everybody just wants to ask her questions because she's publicly speaking and she's six years old. And that's great. And you give her five or six minutes after some back and forth with questions with the council and the mayor. Then the next speaker comes up and they've just got an axe to grind with a particular counselor or the mayor or the city's position on something. And you keep it by the book and it's three minutes and you're, and you're done. And that's a liability under the equal protection clause of the 14th amendment. And so these are the legal risks. These are the risks that I'm hoping to mitigate. And so, so long as we have a strong presiding officer and a council that respects that and the, and the presiding officer knows the way, you know, knows these risks and knows how to, how to be mindful of them. You know, we don't even need rules effectively. But absent that, and these rules are made for the council, this city council and the next city council until the next city council or the one after that decides to change them. The best practice is to not allow it whatsoever. Because any deviation is a complete deviation. And that's the LOC's recommendation. I think it can be, you can have a little wiggle room. And I think the idea there is to still have the spirit of not really responding because there's not much to gain. But to, to be able to ask clarifying questions, I, I, I think that that could be a compromise that would, would sufficiently mitigate the risk of liability.
Mr. City Attorney, if we allowed everybody their three minutes uninterrupted and then did or did not have questions, would they not be treated equally under the law?
It depends on how long the questions go. If you give the 20 minutes of questions.
Somebody does not have a right to be asked a question from a city counselor.
Have a right?
That's right. How would that, how would that not be equal protection? If we give everybody the same amount of time to speak. And if somebody that we don't favor or has an axe to grind, or we just, for whatever reason, we do not interact, don't ask questions, they have not been treated poorly. They've not been treated unequally compared to the Girl Scout who might get a couple of questions.
Yeah.
They've both been given their three minutes.
Well, it's, the example I gave, actually the example that Patty gave was that the Girl Scout was up there for seven or eight minutes.
Okay, but that doesn't.
If I may, what I think what Counsel Richardson is getting to is that everybody gets their three minutes. And then it's the council's prerogative to ask 20 minutes of questions. You're, you're kind of separating the two.
Very true. Yes. And it would be poor practice and, and unwise, in my opinion, to be asking lots of questions.
And everybody got their three minutes.
But should we desire a clarifying question or for the mayor to regain control of the room or to, or to blunt something that was just very egregiously wrong? We need to be able to do that.
I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it seems like you're suggesting that it's not the three minutes that's the issue. It's the questioning. And the Girl Scout, we could get sued if we ask a Girl Scout 20 minutes of question and then ask the troublemaker no questions at all. And I would, you know, that's just the risk you take with being in public service. I mean, or am I not putting words in your mouth?
Nope.
Yeah. Am I, am I correct in assuming that Counsel Richardson's question is, deals with the three minutes? And that's not your issue at all. It's the, it's, it's the clarifying, it's the questions that come after the three minutes are over. That's, that's your concern.
My, my, these are the LOC's concerns. The LOC is concerned because the LOC lives this every day and, and representing cities across the state, every city in the state. And this is their advice. I double checked the week I wrote the staff report that this was still their advice and they said yes. Now, with that said, I, it's, it is not my advice. It is the LOC's advice. And everything in this is the LOC's best practices. With that said, I have, you know, the last sentence of this section three indicates that a compromise we noticed in some other jurisdictions, council's rules involved allowing the mayor or counselors to ask clarifying questions, but it does not appear to be their best practice. And so I, I suppose if I had a recommendation, not that I do at this point, these are the council's rules. But if, if you're asking based off our research, I would, I would recommend that council at least allow a provision to ask clarifying questions.
Mr. Mayor, I have a thought. So the LOC, League of Oregon Cities needs to cover its own CYA. Get what I'm saying? Needs to cover their own backside. And of course, they're not going to give us legal advice to take on any additional risk. They're going to give us the most conservative. They're also giving advice to every single city in the state, including Portland and Eugene, where they tend to have very large, very contentious city council meetings. And I think the Dalles is the Dalles and we have our own. We know our people and we know what happens in these council meetings. And I would say that we clarifying the rules to continue on as we have been with our, limiting our time, but still being able to engage with people. And then I suppose at some point in the future, if a council experienced a, a period of extreme hostility, they might want to change their council rules. But I don't want to do that now and restrict people just because of what maybe might happen at some point in the future.
While I was on council, I think Jim Wilcox was president when we had a gentleman that came and he was trained in chaos. And he came to the meeting and he called us communists. And he was dismissed from the meeting. He was escorted out during that time. And so many of these rules during that time, we didn't have as many tight rules to follow. And so it got, it didn't get out of control, but it got really at the time before he was escorted, you know, and it was one of those times where it was on the brink of of catastrophic meeting. It was controlled, but that's why we need to have procedures like we're doing tonight. In my opinion, I think the three minute to everyone is a courteous way of and, and then maybe the questioning is important because I've done it at the end because they weren't clear enough in either their requests or what they had to say. And so you, we need to have a chance to ask some questions, but not to go for a long period of time. So there needs to be some restriction there as well.
Of course. And, 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 you know, counselors are always welcome to interact with these constituents that provide public comments privately after the meeting in any capacity. And the city council rules are not designed to, you know, interfere with that at all. But, you know.
We have done that in the past and we have all done that.
Yeah, email, phone call.
Follow-up meetings, yes.
I just want to point out that Counsel McGlaughlin, your, what happened in the past is pages 11 and 12 address some of those disruptions and how we're supposed to handle those. So.
And I just want to clarify too, the person was not escorted out because of their free speech. It was because they went past their time and wouldn't stop. And then they were threatening. And so the police escorted them out. So I just want to be clear. You can stand up here and say whatever you want. You can call us communists. You could call us worse, but that's not why you got escorted out.
He was threatening at that point and he was escorted based on that. It wasn't free speech issue. We, we gave him as much as we possibly could, but we didn't have the type of, of procedures in place that we're reflecting right now. I'm in favor of, of, of what we're doing and how we're doing it. So.
Okay. Would it be just very briefly, can I just summarize my, my understanding of the council's direction for this particular issue? Just very briefly, it would be to maintain the, the 15 minute total time, just so council has an opportunity to gauge its agenda for the evening with a uniform three minute max per participant, without the obligation to have 15 minutes of public comment if no one shows up, et cetera, as Counsel Randall mentioned, or Counsel Richardson, excuse me. And to at least allow for the opportunity for the mayor and the council to provide and respond to public commenters with a brief back and forth dialogue with respect to clarifying questions.
I'm in agreement.
I thought we, I, I don't, I thought we decided not to have, like, we didn't want to change anything. That's what I took. Counselor Long and McGlaughlin's comment.
Yeah, I think that isn't that what you?
Well, the idea of only asking clarifying questions is not what I'm picking up.
Okay.
And the, what did you say about the 15 minutes?
Having a 15 minute.
I don't, I don't get, I don't think there's any support for that either.
I, I'm not, no.
My, my notes must be wrong. Okay. So with clarity then, no cap, keep it open-ended, we go with three minutes?
Three minutes. Agreed.
No, no, no expression of limiting council interaction or the mayor's interaction with commenters to clarifying questions.
Correct.
Not at this time.
Okay. Moving on, the last one I wanted to flag was connected with, still on page 167, the packet, connected with the evaluation process for the city manager, city attorney and municipal judge. Council has, on a few different occasions, expressed its desire to reflect on current practices connected with its evaluation of those positions. The rules would be an excellent instrument to document that process. As of today, at least I'm not aware of any direction that council has provided with staff, other than for us to proceed with that one issue for the judge's evaluation earlier this year. So staff I know would appreciate council's direction on whether it would like to include the evaluation process as part of these rules. And if so, the form of evaluation would like to see those appointed employees.
I think that we are planning to do a process and that it's going to take a while, a lot longer than it is to approve these rules unless we're planning to put that over. And I also think I don't know that it needs to be spelled out so specifically here because I think we're about to try something different and, and probably going to have to make changes multiple times until we come down to something that works efficiently. Cause we've been working on this for years and we haven't got it right yet.
Isn't that also going to include like a revised questionnaire or form that we use?
Yeah.
So you're suggesting we hold off on this until?
I would, I'm questioning whether or not it should actually be spelled out in the rules.
See, that is news to me. I didn't know. So that's helpful. And so that's easy enough to just get rid of that section from our rules. I, I didn't know that. And I, I wasn't aware of the city clerk or the city manager did either, considering they both read this draft and didn't say anything. So I leave it to council.
Well, I was the only one that said anything, so.
Well, I do think we ought to spell out the process. I'm not ready to do that with any.
No, of course not. No, that's a no. But.
We know what we don't like. We need to kind of put our heads together at some point and try and get at that evaluation process. But I'm going to limit my own comments to three minutes.
And I think once that's complete, and I, I do expect that to happen this time as opposed to past years when we keep talking about it and not doing anything. That this provision would be great when it's all complete and we can fill in the blanks accordingly.
Okay. I might, I might just put in the next draft a reserved, you know, brackets to be continued for that particular portion. I might just keep evaluations in. We'll see how it, how it shakes out. With all that, there is a amount, a significant amount of revisions and changes here. Packet went out 10 days before the meeting. So plenty of time to read it. And I'm just joking. There's no urgency on my end. I just wanted to make sure that council knew that this was something that staff had been taking really seriously. We've been working on it for quite some time. It's been a very long-term project for us, but it's, it's, we've learned a lot. If there are any other questions that you have, you don't have to ask them to, you know, of, of staff tonight. Just keep them in mind. If, if you review this still in the next coming weeks, please let me know. It is my intent that these are presented for you all in time to be effective on July 1st. I just think that's a, it's a good time to, you know, start of the fiscal year, but there's, there's no urgency on my end. If this is something that you all think after doing some review on it, that there are additional questions or, or things that you would want to have addressed here that aren't, you know, pushing this out a couple more months, it's not the end of the world on my end either.
Much of what I've read here was not, they are rules, but they're also procedures. They outline policies and procedures and I, and, and it's, it's good for any organization to have things clearly defined. And so I appreciate your efforts and I wish, I want you to continue developing and give us the opportunity to discuss and reflect. So this is, this is good news.
Yeah, I think you guys did a terrific job. This is very thorough.
It is.
It looks like you've worked on it for a long time. I guess I'm a little confused as to where we go from here because I have other questions. And you know, there's, there's a lot of information to absorb.
Oh, boy.
What do you guys want to have the staff bring it back at a, in a month or two weeks or how do you want to proceed from here? I mean, I don't think the staff has any real direction.
One thing, Mr. Mayor, if I may add, is each, each counselor could send the city attorney or myself, the questions or areas that you have flagged, we can compile those, summarize them and bring them back for another discussion.
Sure.
If there's enough content there. We can do that on our particular timeline. Again, like I mentioned a moment ago, you know, balancing some of the agendas, maybe something not too specific, but a few months, and then we can, we can schedule that in. We do have a couple of work sessions, additional work sessions, I should say, over the year. So I just want to be mindful of that.
Mr. Mayor, clarifying question to you. Did you, I guess I didn't quite grasp your meaning with how to proceed with the evaluation. Were you saying, yeah, were you, were you thinking to write up a few thoughts or are you saying, no, we just need to get back to it at some point?
On that particular issue?
Yeah.
Well, I think after the election, come January, well, it's a long way away, isn't it? I would entertain a, a, a subcommittee of the council to get together and look at the, look at the evaluation process and come up with a recommendation for the rest of the city council with some staff input, of course, over the next, say, six months.
I would say, you know, I did say earlier that. that staff doesn't really have a burning desire to get this going as quickly as possible or anything. I would, I, I think it makes the most sense for the, for the city of the Dalles, for its council who has the experience, considering that there are some positions that it seems might be opening up for the next, next counselors. It would be, I think, in the city's best interest to have this experienced council be the ones who adopt these rules ultimately, whatever they, whatever form they end up taking ahead of the next election. And so I guess maybe I want to revise what I said earlier to say that I, I hope the rules get adopted in time, at least at most by the next election. Even if the evaluation process is not finalized, again, we can just have a little reserved text in there for that. I just wanted to clarify what I said earlier.
Well, as a practical matter, waiting until the election is really not enough time since we started the process for the evaluations in March, and that doesn't give us near enough time to complete the process if we started in January. So I think we have good reason to get started on this process over the second half of 2024.
The evaluation process, not the rules process?
Correct.
Okay. And I wanted to be extremely clear. I was just talking about the rules process.
Oh, okay. Well, we have two things here on the, to wrap up before we adjourn. One is does the city council agree that we want to put a subcommittee together of two, two counselors to work on the evaluation process before the end of the year? And secondly, the city manager has recommended that city council come up with questions in writing and submit them to the city attorney with questions and comments about the rules that have been submitted to you tonight. Have I summarized that correctly?
Yes, and I agree.
Hey, when would you, let's deal with that second issue. When, when would the city attorney like to have questions or comments from the council in writing by?
How about a month from today? Or, you know.
30 days. Yes.
A month. I think that's a great amount of time to read it and to get us something without, without letting it fall to the back burner. So how about before July 1st? With the understanding that I will have them compiled and answered in either a July or an August meeting.
I think that's a great suggestion. Anybody have a problem with July 1st?
No problem. Agreed.
Okay. Back to the original question. I'm looking for volunteers to serve on a subcommittee to look at our evaluation process.
I will.
I will.
Great.
Bet you didn't think that was going to be that easy.
Okay, this is going in the minutes. Counselor McGlothlin and Counselor Long, a volunteer to serve on a subcommittee to look at the evaluation process for the city attorney, the city manager and the municipal judge for the end of 2024 with.
You've done the most evaluation.
Any thanks from Counsel Richardson, Randall and Maze. And Rania. Okay. Do you feel you have sufficient?
Certainly. I, I really appreciate council's input on this. Thank you all very much.
Okay. Is there any other business? Well, we're gonna, we're gonna go into executive session now, right? City Council of the City of the Dalles will now meet in an executive session pursuant to ORS 192 dot 6602H, which allows the council to meet in an executive session to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose. Any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session is previously announced. No final decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. We expect to return an open session in about
We take a break.
35 minutes.
35 minutes to an hour.
Hold them to that.
We're going in the other.